It's seven o'clock, so I call this meeting to order. Can we stand for the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do I have a motion for approval of the agenda? With the change that after public comment Jen will introduce herself.
Is Will up and running?
Will, are you good? Sorry. You're good, okay.
So I'll make a motion.
All right. And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? I gotta pay attention to the screen. I do not have any public comments.
I have not heard from anybody.
Joan, are you? Okay.
Anybody online, public comment?
I can't see.
Yep, seeing none, okay.
Okay. Jen, can you do a little quick introduction for us?
Hi, I'm Jen Galusha-Brothers. Thank you for letting me introduce myself now. I would've been here earlier, but my son had his first T-ball game, so I was out there saying run to first and picking kids up. But I am the three-four teacher at Timothy now, and so I'm really excited to continue working with Timothy and being able to teach too. That was really important to me, so leading and teaching. That's all I got.
Nice, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, so do I have a motion for the approval of the minutes from 4:10? Meeting, it's hard to believe it was.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. And a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? Anything that needs to be changed? Okay.
Oh, under community engagement.
Yes.
It says the plan is to review all actions since 2019, discuss how to bring back, bring strong conversations back, and I think it's just community conversations.
Okay. All right, we'll make that change. Anything else? Okay, all in favor? All in favor? Can I have to see the hands again, please?
And online, you look good.
Okay. Pat and I abstaining.
Right, because I wasn't here.
I wasn't either. So. All right, so the pre-K update?
And I actually just heard Sarah Bolster five minutes ago, she has a flat tire.
Oh, no.
So she may be able to get here later tonight, but I told her, do not stress about that at all. Take care of yourself, do what you gotta do, and if we have to bump it, we can bump it.
Yep.
Yeah, I think.
We have time in the schedule.
Totally reasonable. Our next meeting, when we get to agenda building, is not packed, so we'll see how that goes.
All right, so on to after-school update.
Oh, and Teresa is floating down this direction from the community event that's been going on. That ends at seven, but she's not quite here yet. I think she was banking on Sarah giving her presentation, and then she was gonna be here, ready to go.
That's fine.
Are folks comfortable doing the after-school update when she gets here?
Yes.
Sure.
We'll fit her right in. Sorry, I'm trying to like push through tonight. Okay, so the F-28 student wellness policy update, I believe that's either you or Jody.
Yeah, and Jody and Stan can chime in a little bit on that. F-28. So I'm not gonna read this whole document to you that we attached in our packet here. I will throw it up on the screen so folks can see the one that I'm referring to. So we have F-28 Federal Child Nutrition Act Wellness Policy. In this policy, this is one of those ones that triggers an annual update. So it's baked into the policy that we check in on our goals and that we share that with the board. There are some write-ups here about how we meet each of these goals. If you had any questions about those things, and a lot of those touch on curriculum, Jody can field some curriculum questions if you have them. If you have questions on anything that touches on the nutrition guidelines, that's the end of the document. Stan can touch on that a little bit, too. I think one thing that's worth noting, we did just go through an audit. So I think that's new information that we didn't have to share with you last year. So Stan, do you wanna, real quick?
Just real quick, there wasn't a lot of feedback regarding the policy. It was a desktop audit, is what they call, so we submitted the wellness policy to Child Nutrition. It was reviewed by them, and in their final letter to us, there was no recommendations or any feedback regarding the policy. I mean, we've always had positive feedback on the policy in the past. We did receive positive, but we didn't receive negative, so we assumed that it was an acceptable policy according to their guidelines.
And I think, is this right, Stan, that we are required to have the policy updated at least every three years to be in compliance? So our recommendation is, we're getting close to that. We should get this worked into policy cycle for review readoption fairly soon. So doing that over the summer would be good, because if we did have another desk audit and they wanted to see our policy, we wouldn't be in compliance anymore after this year. Any questions on the curriculum pieces or the nutrition pieces, Nick?
Just a clarification question, and I'm sure it's regulated by states or feds. At the very top there, there's a section that says, "This is offered to all students K through eight." I'm just curious on the nine through twelves.
The health classes, can you answer that question about why health is required from middle school to high school?
Not only health, but it says also as a component of high school health and PE.
So we have our health proficiencies, just like all of our proficiencies, are banded for grade levels and then scaffolded up. We have the requirement of only one semester of health class for high school. And then, but we do have the requirement in middle school that kids take a PE health like mixed class at least once per year. So that's what it is in practice. I guess maybe, because I don't have it in front of me.
Here.
Here, I'll just lean over, Brian, sorry, Brian.
Nope, nope, you're fine. So part of that is ninth, 10th, 11th, 12th grade, you don't have to offer health every year, because that's not what's required from the state or for graduation.
That's what I was alluding to at the beginning, is that it's probably state or federally mandated.
Yeah, oh yeah, so it's the EQS standards say like how much we have to offer. And we hope that kids continue on and learn more about health and are physically active their whole lives, but this is just, we have to make sure we're meeting the minimums.
Lynn, you got a question?
Yeah, I guess I do, and just to follow up on what Nick's saying, in that first paragraph, it says K-8. And then it says health and PE, and then down below, it talks about goals for phys ed and physical activity. So, and it talks nine twelve and K-12. So I guess my question is, do, I don't understand the K-8 piece.
I do think that that's very specific. I know it says health slash PE there. I think it says that because we tend to offer health and PE together in a lot of places. That first goal is nutrition. The second goal is phys ed.
So should we stay up there? Should we move the K-8 up there? So, and all, so that it includes a nutrition component in all of our K-8 health classes?
Well, this is offered K-8 law students, and as a component of high school, we could change that to nine twelve, if that would make it clear.
Well, that would be up to policy, right?
Well, let me back up, let me back up, though. I love the conversation we're having. This isn't our policy.
No.
These are our answers to how we're meeting the goals in our policy. So if the wording of our answers is not fantastic, then we have not fantastic answers. You know, we can clarify, and this is not an official posted anywhere document. This is our report on our policy. Does that make sense?
So when it gets, just to add to that, when it gets on the rotation for policy, this can all be changed to make way more sense.
This doesn't need to be changed. We will give you an annual report a year from now, and we'll try and sort it out better.
Never mind.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
The policy doesn't, the policy outlines our goals. This is our narrative of how we're meeting our goals. Fair enough? Yeah. Sorry I wasn't clear from the start what this document actually was.
Oh, you probably were.
Yeah. Good, no, good questions. Any more questions?
I was gonna say, we don't need a motion for anything.
No. Okay, that's it, and again, our recommendation.
And make notes, like, guys, make notes for policy committee. Like, when the actual policy is looked at, not this.
And we do wanna look at this one sooner rather than later, so that's really our only request.
Yeah, I have it on a note.
Awesome.
Okay, so moving right along, the Chromebook bid.
So BJ has put together a bid to purchase 100 Chromebooks. We have some grant funding that we've used a little bit every year out of our SRF funds to support that. If you remember, BJ, in making some budget requests, talked about a four-year replacement cycle. A four-year replacement cycle is more expensive than a six-year replacement cycle. So we have not made huge budget asks for technology because we've had SRF funds available to supplement that. So this is a typical order that you would see about this time of year, and folks who've been here for a little while probably remember like a spring and a fall order roughly about this size I used to bring to you. So typical order, but it is grant funding.
And can you, what's the acronym?
Oh, yeah.
Elementary.
Yeah, I actually can't.
Elementary and secondary school emergency, wait, relief, does that sound right?
And the, the.
Is that like COVID month or something?
Yes, in layman's terms, that's the COVID month.
Okay, now I got it.
And those grants are done this September. So those all go away.
Brian, as a new person here, how, what are the Chromebooks, I mean?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna pause, and sorry, I talked a lot and kind of invited questions, but we should do a motion in a second, so.
Sure.
Sorry.
I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation. Is that the right?
Yeah, no, that's perfect, Carol.
So we have.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Pat, second. I have a question. Sorry, discussion? There's three on his bid.
Yep.
Our motion should indicate that we accept the Archer?
Acture.
Acture bid, or the connection bid, or the?
And I'd say, I'd say Carol said to accept the recommendation, which would be Acture. So I think we're okay. But good to point out, make it clear which one we're talking about. Gray, did you have a question?
Yeah, just briefly, how do, how do the schools use these Chromebooks? Like, what's the, what's the point of having them?
For everything.
Everything. The kids have one appointed to them through their whole high school life.
But that's a good question. These are student devices, and we are, we are one-to-one, so, you know, in kindergarten and in first grade and second grade, it's gonna be used probably far less than a high schooler. But starting in third grade, state level testing is on a computer. So our third graders are doing assessments on computers. We do our local assessments, we do our state assessments. Students are learning how to word process on them.
Okay, that.
And probably, Pat, would you say like third or fourth grade? They're doing word processing already. And then there are all sorts of other things where they can plug into literacy and math adaptive programs. So instead of do five worksheets, answer a question, and you'll get one based on how well you did, you know, instead of doing all 20 problems and you breeze through them, you do one well, it gives you a harder one. So it better matches where our students are.
No good deed goes unpunished.
So a little more efficient sometimes, and a little more.
Yeah, you answered my question. The point is, every student is issued one, this is part of the replacement cycle of equipment.
Yep.
And that's, you know, that's the way the stuff works out.
Yes, and I just wanna add, too, that they're used for their schoolwork. They are not allowed with a Chromebook to venture off of their Google account for their schoolwork. So they can't, I mean, they're gonna bring it home because of schoolwork, but they're not allowed to like scroll YouTube or whatever else.
YouTube, they can probably do.
Strictly school stuff.
YouTube, they can probably do.
They might be able to do that for video education.
But they are tied to their school account as a login, and there is filtering. We have, so if you were going to really problematic sites, even when you take it home, there's filtering, so you couldn't go to those problematic sites.
So, for example, is social, just since we're talking about it, is social media sites locked out?
We don't block social media. We don't. And part of that is, we have some pretty good conversations around, is it a technology problem, or is this student behavior problem? So if we, if we lock down anything that could be a distraction, and then students go through, you know, K through 12, never being able to interact with anything that could be a distraction, then we release them off into the world, and good luck. So part of what we think about is, are we working with students to teach them those skills to manage distractions? So if a student is struggling with social media use in school, the first thing we always wanna see is a conversation that the teacher has with the student. Like, hey, you're not supposed to be on that site right now, you're supposed to be on this site. So that's level one. If that student continues to do that, and the teacher's trying certain strategies and they're still not working, then we get an administrator involved, then we pull BJ in from the tech end, and we go, okay, last resort is we're gonna block these things. So we do have some students where we block those things, we do get there, but we always want to make sure that we're trying to work with the student, and if we can cultivate coping skills and, you know, things that they can manage their own distractions, we wanna do that first, so.
Well, without flogging a dead horse, and maybe this isn't the right time to go into it, there's increasing body of evidence that exposure to social media, particularly for younger people, is extremely unhealthy. So what would be the appropriate time, and again, I ask this as a new person here, to discuss changing that? Because if you ask me right now, should you block social media on school computers, I would say absolutely. Period, end of sentence. But, you know, I don't, maybe this isn't the right time to go into that, but what would be the right time?
We actually, BJ was just talking with us about that, I wanna say either late last week or early this week. We've set our leadership team retreat date, which is like in June, right after school ends. That's on our agenda. You know, we are gonna have that conversation. Everybody here is on the same page that we really do believe social media is problematic. The question is, how do we manage that here, and what's the most appropriate? Of course, yeah.
Is there, is there a place where the board does have a role in that?
The board would only have a role in that if they set a policy. So otherwise, it would really be, it would be everybody else's job to sort through how to navigate that. So it would have to be a policy.
So that.
The board could, the board could absolutely adopt a policy that bans social media, and we would have to follow that policy. I would highly encourage the policy committee to meet with BJ and have some really good conversations at length with BJ before doing that, just so that the board is aware of the implications of that, and maybe, you know, how, what that would look like, how it would work, and if there would be unintended consequences or not.
And I'd love to join that, too, just because I am involved in most discipline maybe daily events, since I can speak to what it looks like day to day.
Yeah, I know.
And what the barriers might be.
Steven?
I just wanted to check in on something. The social, responsible social media use and safety on the internet is part of the health curriculum now, correct?
I don't know if it's part of the health curriculum, but we absolutely, for a long time, have, we call that digital citizenship. We've, we've done that for a while. You know, that's a conversation that we absolutely have. So we don't, you know, we don't wait for students to have a problem before we start the conversation, in other words, which I think is what you're getting at, Steven. Is that something that's in the curriculum and we expose all our students to proactively? Yes.
Okay, so we do have a first and a second, so I need a vote on, and I forgot what we were doing.
The Chromebook.
The Chromebook bid, sorry. Thank you, Kim. So all in favor of the accepting the bid?
Thank you, everybody.
We're good, okay.
And I appreciate that dialogue, I really do. That's something that is definitely on our minds, absolutely.
Okay, so on to, we need to elect or select an auditor.
Oh, here.
For the school year '24.
No, he runs away as soon as he's done.
So the auditor now is, I can't remember.
RHR Smith.
Okay. And how long have we had them?
We've had them since we became a unified district back in 2017.
Okay. How have they been to deal with? How have they?
No, they've been, they've been, they've been very good to deal with. They have struggled with timely returns of the auditor, finishing the audit, as you notice. I've come to you maybe in March, saying the audit is done, and giving you the results of the audit in March. They hope to speed that process up. They're, you know, they're originally out of Maine, and they kinda dabbled in Vermont, and then all of a sudden it exploded when pretty much all the auditors in Vermont left or stopped doing business in Vermont. So they've been pretty much the only game in town. And they've increased their staffing now in Vermont up to, I wanna say, somewhere between 50 and 70 people that they've employed in the state of Vermont. So now, the last, basically the last two years, we've had pretty much Vermont people that live here doing the audit. When we first started with them, we were getting a couple people from Maine, and maybe just another person from Vermont, which kinda slowed things down. But now they're hoping that, now that they've pretty much established themselves in Vermont, things will be going at a much more timelier fashion.
Okay.
Unfortunately, with that growth, the audit fee is going up somewhat substantially, I would say substantially, for this upcoming year. Since 2017, up until, you know, last year, the audit fee has pretty much been consistent between $24,000 and $27,000 for that fee. For this upcoming audit, their fee that they will charge us would be $32,000, which is about a 15, a little over 15% increase. There's really nobody out there in Vermont that does these audits. I was not quite expecting a 15% increase, so we're kinda caught behind the, you know, eight ball on this one, because, you know, they needed, they wanna start the audit right away, I mean, in order, and that's pretty much been the standard procedure now with audits, is they start them now and go right up through till the end of September. My recommendation would be to accept them as auditors for this upcoming year, and this year, this upcoming year, I'll also, I'll try to do some research just to see if there's anybody out there that is doing, you know, doing any school audits other than them in Vermont, to see if we can get some competition next year.
Stan, do they make any sort of commitment on a timeline? Or is it possible to?
We try to. Every year, we try to hit a.
I can't remember ever when audits were done on time.
We used to try to get them done by town, at a minimum, but by the annual meeting. Sometimes we've hit it, but with them, maybe the last, I think the last two years is probably the week after, you know, we've had, they do come, they do tell me before the annual meeting, we're not making any changes to the, to the financial numbers.
Well, you don't, you don't have the paperwork.
Or we don't have the audited state, you know, statement saying that the audit has been completed. Again, this year, we will aim for that to be done by then, and to have, you know, to say that the reports, our reports for last year have been audited, but that won't be the goal.
Okay, so I make a motion to continue to have RHR Smith as our auditor for one more year at the cost of $3,200. Thousand. Anyway, yes, thousand, sorry.
I used to do audits back in the 1900s.
I know, I'm like, I went in the wrong business. Audit it for 20 years, what was I thinking, I should've kept with it.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Nick. Any more discussion on it?
We're only locked into them.
Per year.
Every year.
Yeah, we would just, we would have to obviously have no forehand, but obviously, we would have to get our ducks on the road beforehand, too, to see if we could line somebody up or just do a bid. I mean, we're not required to do a bid for auditing services that are exempt from the bid process, but we could do a bid where we ask them to submit a three-year bid, and if there's somebody else out there, we could do the same.
Do you, if you explored, because you said you were gonna look into it and see if anybody was really out there?
Yeah.
Like, three months, like, end of the summer, maybe? We could share with the board how things are even looking? Would that be reasonable? Or?
Yeah, it would be reasonable, see if there's anybody out there that does audits besides them in Vermont.
So I'll, we'll look at that sometime this summer, we'll make sure to bring it back up at a meeting to just give an update somewhere along lines. Awesome.
All right, so all in favor? All right, we're good, thank you. Steven, can you lower your virtual hand? Thank you, so I don't get confused with seeing your real one and that one.
Do we have?
Teresa's here, if we do wanna jump on the after-school presentation. I'll get that ready to go.
Are you good with that?
Yeah, I am definitely good with that. Good evening, everybody. I don't know if you had a chance to stop into our Community Resource Fair and dinner that was going on this evening, but in that parish, one of the staff here at Mill River did an amazing job organizing, gosh, it was maybe 15 or so community organizations, as well as a dinner for our families and our, really, our whole county, we were welcome. We were trying to pull them in as they're coming out of all their games and things, so I just rushed in from helping her clean up that. And here I am to talk about after-school programs, both at our elementary schools, as well as a little bit about what's happening here at Mill River. Okay, so I thought I would start with a snapshot of our after-school programs at the elementary level. This is the sundown on my first full school year here with Mill River, which is incredibly helpful to try to get a more broad snapshot of our operations and how our families think about and use our programs, how our staff think about and what their vision is for our programs. So I thought I would share just a couple little key points. The first is, we weren't centrally organized in any fashion in our after-school programs for registration, or billing, or even licensing, and that's a huge burden on those site staff. They spend a lot of time managing parent accounts and tracking down dollars and managing all the minutia of the code. So as much as I could with their feedback, I tried to centralize what was less important for them to do there on-site with the staff and the kids, and pulled that here to Central Office. So one tool that we use to do that is a cloud-based program called ProCare. So this tool is used by lots of childcare and after-school programs for billing, registration, collecting attendance, and also communicating with families. So one simple, small change of adding this program has really alleviated a lot of the administrative burden to our site directors, which was just in time, because in a moment, I'll talk about some of the changes at the state level that they now have to support for program quality's sake. Attendance, typically in an after-school program at a public school, you'll see attendance vary between 10 and 20% of the total school population. Sometimes the bigger schools will have a larger attendance number, and the smaller schools tend to have a smaller percentage of the students attending. So I've shared with you some little salient points here, clarifying, the average daily attendance is 18 students, there's 42 registered. A lot of families will complete the registration form, so that if they need the program, say somebody's running late, or, you know, there's traffic, their student can, can join us. And 14 of those 18 students are eligible or receive childcare financial assistance, and we'll talk about why that's important later. Shrewsbury. Shrewsbury is ten, fourteen registered and four, which is a big increase, like, double the number of students eligible for childcare financial assistance. Pymmouth, ten, forty-four registered. They have, like, practically most of the students.
Almost everybody.
Registered over there, which is great. It'd be more great if they came more regularly, but that's just not their need right now. Wallingford, the average, is twenty-six, and you can see, they also have a lot of families that will sign that registration form because they love the safety net of having their child have someplace to go if it's snowy or icy or grandpa's running late. And eighteen of those students qualify for childcare financial assistance. At the state level, for licensed programs, which would be, um, early childhood, pre-K and elementary schools, uh, there were some pretty big changes that affect us mostly in a positive fashion. Act Seventy-Six was a huge overhaul of, um, both, um, of the protocols around licensing as well as funding. The governor's, um, goal and the legislator's goal was to increase the infrastructure for, uh, youth development, early childhood programs, so that more families could access that. And the boldest move that they made, one was to increase the eligibility for financial assistance to four hundred percent above the federal poverty level, which is amazing. Um, they also, I didn't put this on the slide, but they increased our reimbursement rate, um, by thirty percent for students. So at the bottom bullet, you can see the average award range for a child is anywhere from one forty to two forty per week, and that's for a part-time after-school care. And so families might be wondering, well, we don't pay, we, we charge nine dollars a day for a family to attend program. It's because the state feels strongly that unless we invest in the staffing and program quality, then we can't have healthy environment communities. If we don't have healthy vibrant families who require quality early childhood and after-school programs. So, one, uh, request I have of everybody is, even though it's still called childcare financial assistance, really, it's not that anymore. I mean, four hundred percent above the federal poverty level is huge. Um, and family co-pay is, I think, one seventy-five above the poverty level. So families that, some families might still have a co-pay at that amount. But for us to access those dollars, we need folks to apply. And there's still a misconception about it's financial aid, I don't need it, I won't qualify for it, and the new messaging is, this is the state's investments in us, but we can't access those dollars unless you apply. So, thinking of it as an investment in our schools and an investment in our programs. It's not a grant that we can just apply for. The only way we can tap into those, uh, capacity building dollars is if families apply for it. Thankfully, they're making some changes to that process because it's incredibly cumbersome and prohibitive for a lot of folks to fill that thing out. But that was, for us, a substantive change, is Act Seventy-Six in terms of creating sustainable programs, adequately compensating our staff, uh, being able to broaden the depth and scope of what we do after-school, and also, um, since they're not restricted dollars, being able to subsidize small schools as well as some of the programming here at potentially Mill River.
I have a question about, so is the, uh, is it like a whole separate application for the after-school to apply for that? Or is it like part of the free and reduced lunch that families fill out or?
Yes, it is, um, so, it's separate. So for a family to receive a childcare, and it's so-called childcare financial assistance award, they have to apply through a community-based partner. So there's one application for the state, but the applications are submitted, for us, it's the, um, Rutland Parent Child Center.
Or VAC.
Yeah, Vermont Achievement Center, thank you.
It's childcare society through VAC.
I remember this now. This is like bringing back memories from my service, yeah.
Yeah, the Vermont Achievement Center, which, unless you knew what they do, you wouldn't know what they do. Uh, they're our community-based partner for processing these applications and, um, managing the awards. So family fills out the application, submits it to the Vermont Achievement Center, they manage the awards, which the family has to say, this is my child's program site, or else that award won't pop up in the portal for us, where I put in the attendance and build the state. So there's a couple little hoops that folks have to jump through. And it is not attached, unfortunately, to their free or reduced. Wouldn't that be convenient?
Wouldn't that be amazing?
Nothingness, yeah.
And one thing that the state is piloting in some school districts, though, is, uh, because so few families, now that there are universal meals, are filling out that free and reduced meal form, they're looking at Medicaid, right? So that would not necessarily help us here because we want families, all families to apply. But it helps us in other grant-seeking opportunities because often grants are attached to that rate of application for free and reduced meals. Ooh, the other big change that you might have heard about, and I'm sure that Sarah would have talked about today, is something called, our state loves acronyms. I've lived in states all over our country, from Arizona to Alaska to Florida to Michigan. I've never seen such an acronym-dependent system. So, STARS, Step Ahead Recognition System, is something that's in place in most states that have licensed childcare. Typically, it's most pertinent to, mm, independent or private childcare programs because they want to demonstrate their level of quality. Um, especially if they're trying to recruit families externally from any existing system. In a school, we kind of have a captive audience. Our families, um, rely on us, they know us, they trust us. So they look a little less for us at STARS, but for other organizations that serve youth and families, STARS are important because it's an external indicator of, of quality. And this year, the state, it used to be a form, you'd go onto this ancient, crickety old portal and fill out all these questions. Now, it's a true continuous quality improvement process using something that Twenty-One C uses, Twenty-First Century, uh, the Light Arts Center for Program Qualities Youth Program Quality Assessment Tool. So you have an external observer who comes in, uses this tool, observes your program, gives you a report. You create a continuous quality improvement plan, submit that to the state, and then they award your STAR three. And there's five stars. What's important about this is that it used to be tied to your STARS level, it used to be tied to how much your funding level was for childcare financial assistance. It no longer is attached to that. But it is still required to have STARS level three for specialized childcare, which is really important for us because a lot of our students qualify for specialized childcare. So all of our programs need to have at least a STARS level three. It's a pilot year for the state. There's Sparks, which is the System for Program Access to Quality Supports. And this is where the warehouse of all this information, um, is stored and where the observers come from. And so we've got the states, the Vermont Early Childhood, Vermont After School, and Sparks, all trying to talk together in this new big system. And it's, it's very, uh, clunky right now, so thank goodness it's a year for a pilot. Shrewsbury and Clarendon have, um, gone through this whole CQI process and do have their three STARS. Uh, Wallingford is waiting for their observer to come out. We've gone through two observers who have canceled numerous times. They're all up in the Burlington area. So it'll be interesting to see how the state sustains this new system, which is great, but, uh, very resource, very resource-heavy.
And I think worth a good shout-out to Clarendon.
Oh, yeah.
Their visit, their visit had high praise for the program.
Yes, they did. Yes. And they said that they would have qualified for four STARS. But that requires a separate step that the visitor didn't do, so we can't get our four STARS. And so that person does this extra step of, this, uh, I don't want to, like, drown you in the minutia of the process, but there's another thing they have to do that they didn't do, so. But three STARS is what we need so we can continue to be specialized care providers. That's the important piece for, for students that need that. Any questions about that? Oh, Day Camp is right around the corner. Every year, we offer five sessions of camp from June twenty-fourth to July twenty-sixth. The capacity of camp is sixty, which is our licensing capacity at Clarendon, the school that we use to, um, operate our camp program. This year, uh, because of the PCB stuff, camp is a little bit shorter. It's from nine AM to three PM, because we need to limit the amount of time the kids are in the spaces that we use at Clarendon. Enrollment is on trend, is the same as it has been for, um, as long as we have records. The first two sessions of camp tends to be not as full. Uh, families are wrapping stuff up. The Fourth of July hits and a lot of people are doing other things. And then the last three sessions will hit that capacity of sixty. Uh, camp is great. Shannon, the site coordinator, um, at Clarendon is the camp director during the summer, which is as it should be because Clarendon's, the program runs on Clarendon's license, so the more consistency we have there, the better it is for us and for the, for the kids. Staff from any site can come and work, or any school can come and work, but it's good to have that consistency and leadership at that one program. So she has field trips planned, the kids go swimming every day in the afternoons, Friday they have an all-day field trip. And Jess at Pymmouth is going to help us, uh, offer the summer food service program again. Since we're starting late, we're not going to do a full breakfast. We're just going to do an AM snack, and we'll provide lunch again for the kids.
What is the age range for the kids?
The age?
Yeah.
It is, um, this year's kindergartners through this year's fifth graders. So with, um, the license that we have, a student has to be in kindergarten in order to be able to attend, so entering or rising kindergartners are not able to be a part of this program because of the, the licensing requirements. And some of the older kids are aging out. Thirteen is the oldest that could be in our, in our licensed program. Mill River, this year, we were able to support the supervision of primarily our student athletes. One of the unique things about Mill River is that so many of our students participate in sports. And most of the practices began anywhere from fifteen minutes to an hour and a half after, uh, the school day ends. So we have this large collection of anywhere between forty-five and seventy students that need supervision, and they're kind of a captive audience, too. So we've got these seeds of, of a program. And for a school our size, seventy students is a really healthy percentage of our total school population. Like, that blows Rutland out of the water, visited their high school and middle school programs, and that's more students that they have because their student athletes are not a part. Uh, this year, we're funding that program by, um, tail end of a RFSR after-school grant that was out there. Act Seventy-Eight is a brand-new grant that was created. It's funded by cannabis sales tax, and it looks like it might become a sustaining grant. There's two different tiers you can apply for. We did apply for it. You might have heard some hubbub in the news about people being upset about the, uh, state moving these funds into a special, um, what is it called? In that line item, special budget? Out of the Agency of Education budget and into a special budget. Because if it, the money lived in, um, the Agency of Ed budget, it would restrict who could apply for the grant, which is not the intent of the grant writers. So they did move it into the special fund, and now any organization can apply for these dollars. And, uh, a lot of them have, I think they had, mm, well, originally eighty organizations filed a letter of intent to apply, and I'm not sure how many eventually went through. So it became a very competitive grant. And we should learn this week whether or not we've received, um, this grant. I'm a little worried once they open it up. Um, some things that work against us, I guess us, would be that free reduced lunch application we were talking about. I don't think, do any of our schools fall, uh, Brian, over that threshold?
What's the threshold?
It's fifty?
We don't, we typically are right above forty, but not quite above fifty. We do have some schools, uh, maybe Wallingford, maybe Clarendon, um, you know. It, five students can be a big percentage shift at our elementary schools. When you think about where we are, you think about Rutland City, you think about, uh, Slate Valley, our free reduced lunch numbers tend to be smaller. Yeah, so, we receive fewer grant dollars in a lot of different ways. And, you know, our title grants, we just get fewer dollars. But then we, we see lots of grants that come our way where there's criteria, where they are going to look at your percentage, and they're going to, uh, use that as a weight in your application. So the higher your percentage is, the more likely you are to get the, the grant sometimes. So, we, we are at a little bit of a disadvantage in our region when it comes to things like that.
Yeah, and, for example, Twenty-First Century, that's one of the tenants is, uh, financial need. Title one does, is an allowable, um, designation, but not weighted the same way as applications from schools who can demonstrate a different type of, of need. Uh, the grant model for Act Seventy-Eight is community part, school partnership. Uh, so we had our first group of community partners that were interested in aligning with us. The Green Mountains and Rock Climbing Club had a whole slew of outdoor recreation opportunities that they crafted just for us in case we received this grant. Farm and Wilderness, which is a map-for-profit over in Plymouth, is already doing, um, community outreach for elementary schools, teaching conservation and farming and other outdoor activities. So they were interested in bringing that to Mill River. Karen and Scott McCullough have been working with me to try to bring, well, they've, they've been working to try to bring First Robotics to Mill River, and so I'm working hard to try to find funds to help make that happen. And then one of our facility staff, Scott Wallen, does amateur radio. So we've got a grant in to send them to a training, which allows us to get more grants so that we can provide some amateur radio activities that actually align great with the First Robotics. So regardless of whether or not we get this Act Seventy-Eight grant, I'm hoping to be able to leverage some of these partnerships with other smaller grants. We can at least get these activity-specific programs going for our, our students. And you can see, again, for some days, we're really rocking, like, seventy, seventy-five kids in there.
We are very excited about this because way back when I was a teacher here, we did have some after-school activities, and, and I did guitar club. And then Brendan Ernie was doing rock climbing. Uh, and we had some folks who were doing some cool things, but then we've had a little bit of a dry spell where there hasn't been much going on. So it's really great to see, not just some things happening, but looking at really interesting ways where we can access as many, as many opportunities, find grant funding as we can, so that it's not a local expense. Um, because there are things out there.
And one of the, mm, the way that I think about serving children and youth in our district is AK through twelve. Sarah Wolfster does the pre-K perspective, so we're really thinking about having a more linear, um, li, uh, service art for our students. And, uh, now that we don't have designated dollars, uh, in our after, elementary school programs, they're no longer funded by Twenty-First Century, I think you all knew that. And one of the main reasons was there wasn't a financial need for it. Um, if you can't spend the dollars, you have to spend every other type of dollar before you can hit those Twenty-First Century dollars, and we couldn't. Um, so my predecessor, rightfully so, didn't reapply for that because we would not have been eligible, um, to apply, especially now with the new childcare financial assistance funding. So since that's not designated, my hope is, is that if we can generate enough surplus in the after-school program, we can offset some costs here at Mill River because we don't charge the students for activities here in Mill River. Um, there is no childcare financial assistance for middle school and high school students, unfortunately, to help offset the costs of providing activities for them, which are incredibly important. Does any of you that have middle schoolers or high schoolers or teach them know, um, they shouldn't just be left alone and not just be the sports kid or the theater kid or nothing. They need something to find their spark and find their passion.
I don't know, but does the Boys and Girls Club, that kind of, that organization, is that something, I'm sure you have looked at that, but is that an organization that you could partner with for the older kids? Is that?
Potentially, if they have the capacity. They were actually here tonight, um.
And they actually, they run the whole after-school program for Slate Valley.
Yeah, I read that, so that's why.
I think that's a scenario where, where we have Teresa and we have some local resources and we're doing that. That's a scenario where they contract it out.
Oh, they, you.
And I, you know, they might, they might work with us.
Yeah, that's, I was just wondering if they partner at all.
Yeah, yeah.
If they had the funding, it'd be the same issue because, uh, their delivery of the after-school programs, they operate licensed programs, so they're generating revenue. But in the middle school or high school, there are no, they would have to apply for, you'd either have to co-apply for grants because there would need to be some way to fund this thing still, to pay for their staff and the supplies and, you know, all this stuff. Um, it, but it's a great, yes, that, that would be an awesome partnership. But it's a great, yes, that would be an awesome partnership. And they're trying to do something actually in Fairhaven for the kids out there. Slate Valley Cares, Boys and Girls Club, and Fairhaven High School just got an AmeriCorps award. The trick is getting AmeriCorps fellow to apply and come and do it to see if they can try to get a teen center or something rolling out there. So I just say anecdotally, if the Boys and Girls Club isn't just popping in with a program, my guess is they probably are a little resource draft.
But Teresa is always looking for new partners to add to the list.
Yeah.
For sure.
I think there's a lot of value. We've been lucky that we haven't had to say, oh, no, we can't do this, let's outsource it completely. We have a good model where we have the local support. We have Teresa who's here every day, who's talking to our staff every day, who's walking around the building, seeing kids and able to have those conversations about what are our needs. And then she's partnering with people in the community that can meet those needs. I think that's valuable.
That's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good rest of the year.
Everybody have a good rest of the year.
Thanks, Teresa.
Thanks. Okay, so on to radio bid. Somehow I lost everything I had on my screen, so go right ahead.
So we have, we have radios that have been in place for many years. Some of you may remember that I filled in as principal at Shrewsbury. Gosh, I don't even remember how many years ago that was now, like seven or eight years ago.
It was a while, yeah.
The radios that we had in place there were flaky at best for Shrewsbury and for some other areas. So when our buses go down to Ludlow, they get in the valley and it's challenging for a bus to get to home base or get to another bus. This, this is a request to use some funding that we have available. This is something that was not previously budgeted. So we want to bring it to the board because it's a change of plans in how we're going to use these buildings and grounds funds. But this would be an upgrade to our radios. So instead of analog radios, they're digital radios. And the company was nice enough to let us test some systems out. So Connie got those installed temporarily and we tried them out. And the ability to reach our buses is so much better with these radios. So strong recommendation to contract with CBC. There's an installation fee of $2,000.
That's for all of the radios?
Everything, the installation fee is $2,000 total. The monthly that we pay now is $448 a month for the analog. The monthly that we would pay next year for the digital would be $667 a month. So there is an increased cost per month. It's not huge. The installation fee is there, but it's not huge either. So we feel like we get a lot of bang for our buck doing this. And I think when you talk about safety, you think it addresses some safety concerns in a pretty real way. So we would ask that the board approve us to contract with CBC to install these new radios.
Will I make a motion?
Second.
Who's seconding?
I did.
Oh, thank you. Any more discussion on it, or any discussion on it?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. The service, that monthly fee, these are digital radios. So is what that company is providing is like the network that links all the radios up so they work everywhere?
Yeah, and I'm sure if we ever have issues, you know, they're on call to support, too. So a lot of that is support.
Got it, that makes sense.
This is in no way like limited cellphone service, it's not at all, like this is outside of that.
Oh, yeah, 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 absolutely. No, this, this-
Must be satellite or-
So this works, would work regardless of signal?
Absolutely.
That's what your monthly fee is for. They must have-
So it's a satellite system, it's gotta be.
So we are, we are piggybacking on, on systems that, you know, first responders are using. You know, those types of things that are in place to absolutely make sure we have the best signal we can have. Really, the problem now is just the analog has, has more, you know, there are landscape challenges, especially in mountainous areas. So the digital overcomes that.
Do they provide some kind of guarantee that their service will work everywhere our buses go?
Not at all.
No, which is one of, so B&amp;G had a good conversation with Connie and Tim. And during their test phase, they drove it to the current mountainous terrain areas that we have problems with, which are quote-unquote the blackout areas. If you go through this valley or through this turn-
Well, they know, they know.
You don't have any communication. And right now, all of those areas, you're able to drive and communicate between there and here, or communicate between there and another blackout zone. So they have very high praise of this-
So they tested it?
They did test it.
Thanks for adding that, Nick. The other thing I think that is worth mentioning, too, is Connie's here in the morning on the radios. She's here in the afternoon on the radios. Whenever our drivers are out, there's coverage. You know, there are things that pop up for Connie sometimes, but more often than not, Connie is there providing coverage, so.
They were able to test it between here and the fire station in Ludlow, which is far, much further than the analog ones go today.
All right, so all in favor?
Great, thanks, everybody.
Thank you. All right, so now on to Clarendon PCB bid.
We did our Wallingford one maybe at our, at our meeting on April 10th, maybe? So maybe not too long ago. This is round two of testing in Clarendon. The interesting thing about how this system was set up at the state level was round one was just covered for everybody and they sent the consultants in and paperwork did not go through our business office. Anybody who identified PCBs and needed round two testing, they set up a grant for us to access. So we've accessed the grant. And Harper Environmental, who's done all of our testing, has completed their testing and they've invoiced us. So we've got the grant approval. We got our ducks in a row with, with the Agency of Education, with the Department of Environmental Conservation. And we just need approval to pay this because of the cost. It is grant funding, so there are no tax implications for us at all. But we do need your approval because of the size of this. So we would ask for approval to, approval to pay Harper Environmental $23,082.
Have they done it already? I'm sorry, no, we haven't had many.
So where are the PCBs being detected primarily? Water?
Yeah, let's do the, let's do-
I'll make a motion that we pay the $23,082.
I'll second it. Now, discussion.
So round two testing, what they do in the first round is air testing, air quality. So they set up in a lot of different rooms. And if they have four rooms that are all pretty similar construction, they're going to test two of them. Round two testing is when they find those rooms that have elevated levels, they're going to now go, we need to look in the ceiling tile. We need to actually look in the glue under the floor tile. We need to check the caulking in the windows. So they know the different things in the room that are worth checking out in that round two now that they know there's something in that room. So largely, what we've found in Wallingford and in Clarendon, it's caulking. That's, that's the problem. Which is not a surprise, I think.
It's old in there.
Yeah. Clarendon, Clarendon, we are waiting to hear back from them because they were thinking about doing more testing. We step back and we let the consultants and the Department of Environmental Conservation sort through that and then they tell us what we need to do. So we're, we're kind of in a holding pattern with Clarendon. Wallingford, we're supposed to be having somebody come out and look at the windows in Wallingford to keep moving forward on that plan after round two there. But again, we're waiting on them. So we're in a little bit of a holding pattern, Wallingford, but a little bigger holding pattern for Clarendon right now.
Once the sources are identified, does the grant funding pay for remediation?
Yeah, so there is, there is a pot of money at the state level. I think it's at about $4 million, something like that. The really interesting thing with that pot of money is the legislature has been throwing around the idea of, I think there's a bill out there that did make crossover, that would pause the program when the money runs out. So that puts the whole state in a really interesting scenario of we've just done all these tests and we've identified all these areas. And gosh, what happens if that money runs out and we haven't done the remediation yet somewhere? You know, we are, we are of the understanding that these things will be covered somewhat. Off the top of my head, I don't remember if remediation is like an 80/20 split or if remediation actually was going to be fully covered. We haven't even gotten close there yet. So there'll be another process where the Agency of Education would set up a grant for us and we would apply for the grant and we would access the funds that way. It's not looking like a huge cost at Wallingford yet, but jury's out a little bit. So they could, they could have told us some far more problematic things than-
Caulking in windows, sure.
And in some cases, not for MRU school districts, but in some cases, not all schools have been through their first and second stages.
Yeah, yeah. Mill River was cleared, hooray. Shrewsbury and Tinmouth haven't been tested, so.
So there's this long line of, here's all the schools in the state. And they, okay, we did this one, we did this one, we did this one. And all these schools are still down here. And now that they've said, we may pause this, everything's gone to like a snail's pace.
If you like, if you like playing the odds, the odds are that Shrewsbury and Tinmouth are fine because they stacked testing up to prioritize schools that were built or renovated in the era where PCB-containing materials were most prevalently used. So in theory, the later tested schools, you know, should have fewer instances.
Somewhere between 1975 and 1988.
Yeah, so, so it does make sense that Wallingford, Clarendon were our first, were our first tests. And yes, we found some. Mill River came next and we didn't. So we're hopeful that that trend continues and that they've, you know, targeted the schools that really have a higher likelihood of having it, so.
So does Harper offer like an estimate of what it would cost?
For when we get to remediation?
Yeah.
Yeah, we will be hearing from them what it will look like, absolutely, yeah. There, even with this that you're seeing tonight, this second round of testing, they had to give us a work plan and we had to get the DEC to sign off on the work plan with that dollar amount. So there's nothing that's being done that doesn't have a dollar amount already, already figured out and then the grant funding lined up. So we do have some hoops to jump through and those will be known quantities before we keep moving.
Have they already been approved to be the ones doing the remediation or is that a request for a bid?
Harper Environmental was assigned to us. So that's an interesting thing where we do what the state tells us to do. And, you know, we've talked about that, like, oh, this is really interesting that we're not putting this out for bid, or, but this is something that's a state, a state-designated project and we do what they tell us. Because typically, any other work like this, especially construction work, absolutely construction work, you know, we are, we do need to follow some pretty stringent bid requirements. So great question.
Might be because it's a state project, so they did a state bid.
Yeah, they have maybe three, maybe three contractors they're working with and they just kind of split all the, all the districts up to work with those three consultants, so.
So we have a first and a second. We had discussions, so all in favor of?
Great, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
All right, on to driver's ed contract.
I promise I will be quiet at some point tonight. Driver's education.
We cut you off after this one.
Yes, please do. Driver's education, we were talking in personnel. We had a contract for a part-time social studies position. And historically, at the high school here, we have had a part-time social studies, part-time driver's ed position for a long time. You can imagine that finding somebody who has those exact credentials and the willingness, especially with teacher shortages, that's a really, really tall order. So we tried advertising a couple of different ways. We tried doing a full-time position, social studies and driver's ed, to see if there was anybody who maybe had one and would be willing to get a provisional for the other. We posted that for a reasonable amount of time. We split it up when we advertised them separately. We tried that for a reasonable amount of time. And that's been a hard one to fill. So driver's education is an interesting thing, actually, that if we did not offer driver's education, we would be required to pay for the full cost of it for anybody who went to access it through a voucher. So there's a lot of value in offering it in-house. I think it breaks down some barriers where students may have a hard time accessing if we didn't offer in-house. So we could say, okay, never mind, we'll just do vouchers. Vouchers can be problematic, too, because then you don't necessarily know what the cost is going to be. And then you're getting bills for the vouchers. So we, we actually, Joan is here, Joan and Katja with the association. We sat down with them to try and talk through and problem-solve. You know, how do we go about trying to offer something embedded in our school day? Because we all agree that that's probably the best for the most number of students. And to, and to not, not cross any, not to cross any lines with our master agreement. You know, because we're saying this is a, this is a position that we would hire for and would be part of the union. Well, now we're going to contract it out and they're not part of the union. So the, the association was great in sitting down to problem-solve and think about really what's best for kids. And we've got a, we've got a side agreement in place for a year. And, and we've, we've agreed to repost and retry hiring next spring during hiring season. Because, gosh, wouldn't we love to have somebody in-house? Absolutely. But we've got approval to enter into a contracted services agreement for this coming school year. There's actually a session that would run in the summer, like we normally offer, and a session that would run in the spring. And we would be, we would be meeting roughly the same number of students' needs through driver's education that we did through the part-time position, if that makes sense. So what I would ask the, I would ask the board for, to authorize me to enter into this services agreement with Allstate Driving Instruction LLC for FY '25.
I'll do a motion, but I want to discuss.
Yeah, absolutely.
So we always discuss.
Certainly.
Second. Okay, now discuss.
Will this, I have a couple of questions. Will they provide a classroom component the way that Mike did?
Absolutely. They will cover classroom and driving.
Okay, and will kids still get credit for driver's ed the way they did?
They will not get the half credit. That is, that is something-
Because they're not a certified teacher.
They are not a certified AOE educator, correct.
That was my first question. I'm sure they'd rather have the driver's ed than the credit. The second question was, what are, have you, can you talk about how you've explored maybe somebody in-house who would be interested in getting the certification to take that on? Is that something?
We have had some folks in the past who have been interested and we've been having those conversations. We, we had somebody here who accessed some courses even to start going down that path and that just didn't come to fruition. Connie has taken some classes. Connie can do driving. Connie can't do the classroom piece. So, you know, we've, we've worked with Connie to support her through some of that coursework, too. And it would be fantastic, fantastic if Connie could do that. But that's kind of been our backup plan because it would be really challenging to piece together, okay, Connie can do the driving, but who can do the classroom teaching? You know, so it became a little bit more challenging. And, and the contractor for a year buys us a little more time to problem-solve.
Yeah, I was thinking of other faculty who might be interested in doing it.
Well, Len has volunteered. I don't know how many times.
That's why he raised his hand, yeah. No, but, but to your point, to your point, we didn't just go, ah, we'll just contract.
Obviously, and you did answer, the other question was how, I was going to ask you to talk about how you determine the numbers of students.
That's based on history, what we've historically done. Len?
Sorry, a little slow on the uptake there. One of the issues is you have to be a licensed teacher to start with. The driving part is totally separate. You don't have to be a licensed teacher in order to do that. So, and I mean, I've talked to, being a former driver's ed teacher, and I plan on staying that way, by the way.
Oh, you're volunteering again.
It's, it's a great job, it really is. And you don't need a whole lot of courses if you're a licensed- a licensed teacher.
Sure, right. You just have to be a...
Back in the day, I took two courses in one summer up at UVM, basic and advanced driving, and that was it. So, but I think it's hard now for teachers and for folks to be willing to step up and do this. It used to be coaches, every driver ed teacher was a coach, and so, I just think it's a difficult position, and I can speak personally. It's tough driving with kids. And, you know, the fact that they're providing the cars, that's huge. You know, we used to have to go and get our own. So, they're providing the cars, they're providing the insurance. You know, Brian and I chatted about this today, and I asked many of the same questions currently you ask.
Which are good questions, yeah.
I think it's a, I think it's a reasonable compromise for you.
What about the...
The easy route would have been, we'll just do vouchers, and then we don't have to worry about any problem-solving, you know? But we weren't comfortable just doing that. Nick?
I presume somebody else has looked through the contract? I don't see anything that sticks out at me.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
We have to provide a space, not that we wouldn't anyways.
Yep.
And then, is there any continuity in who the instructor will be? Like, you're not going to have a different instructor every day?
No, no, no. They have, they do not have a, they don't have 10 people. The person that's going to be working with us is going to be working with us. The person who does summer might not be the same person who does spring.
That's fine.
But it's not going to be a different person every day. That's my understanding, that they actually had to do some good working around to say, well, let's see where our other people are at other schools and who can be with you. So, there, and having this conversation now is pretty darn important, because they said, we have some flexibility now, we can figure out who can work with you, because we don't have everything else locked in yet, so... But no, good question.
Do they use our cars that we have?
No. They have their own vehicles, they have their own insurance, and they'll be taking care of all of that.
So, then later, because now she says, what will we be doing with our driver's ed?
No, that's a great conversation, and actually, you know, Stan and I can bring you some information on that, maybe at our next meeting or a summer meeting. We were thinking next year was going to be our last year in that car, anyway. So, that's something to think about, for sure. That was, Stan and I were thinking like a fall budget season conversation, but we can plant some seeds a little sooner.
So, is this money, this is out of our budget? This is not grant? This is not...
This would be, this would be pretty much right in line with the cost of .5 position, actually. It ended up being pretty darn close, so it's not...
Kind of washed it out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I have another question about the numbers, because I ran into this problem once. So, there's a minimum of, oh, I better put my glasses on, because I can't see.
Forty.
A minimum of 40, but they get paid $36,000.
Yeah.
So, are we pretty, it seems like you're pretty confident that they'll have, be at least 40 students that will access.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah, we have a lot of upcoming drivers.
They were concerned, and on their end, they were saying, well, if you tell us that this is all going to work, but you only send us five kids, we can't do this. You know, so that, the minimum is there as a protection for them. You know, we'd be a little surprised if we didn't have students sign up, just based on history.
Yeah, well, as long as, yeah.
We have a, we have a need, definitely.
Yeah. You know, and if this, and if for some crazy reason, this year, we only had 30 students, or we only had 20 in the summer, and we only had 20 in the spring, you know, we'd rethink it the next time around.
Yeah, that sounds unlikely.
It does sound unlikely, but...
How many seniors, how many juniors are there at Mill River?
Sixty.
Sixty, so, I mean, yeah.
It is not even juniors.
They're going to be fighting over it.
Len? Unmute.
You might want to make sure you let students know, as they're signing up for courses this year, that, number one, they're not going to be getting credit for driver's ed.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, number two, you know, to, that they need to plan ahead, because this is going to be their only option, and since we are offering it as an option, if they want to go get private driver's ed lessons, then that's going to come out of their pocket.
Yeah, yeah. And that, so there are some things that are definitely changing, and some things that aren't, and after tonight, Kalen's going to be crafting something, working with the guidance department, to give them all that great information around signing up, because they're still going to keep in place their sign-ups and their priorities by birthday. So, they're going to take their current system and their current communications, they're going to update that, and as soon as we have approval, they're going to start getting that out to folks to try and get our summer spots filled up. So, that's a great, great thing to think about, Len. Oh, they already started sharing some information?
Yeah, we got something on the 24th.
Okay.
Okay, so, all in favor of contracting with Allstate Driving Instruction LLC?
Great, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. All right, so now, we're on to committee reports, so Brian can take some water, and, yes. Personnel.
Hey, Ben. Okay, we have several contracts for people's approval, starting with a contract, and I'll make a motion, that we offer Dennis McNichol a contract as a sixth-grade classroom teacher, 1.0 full-time equivalency at Wallingford.
I second that.
Do you want me to keep rolling here, Andrea?
Um...
Andy, well, I'll ask for discussion, and...
I was going to say, we have to, we're discussing a little?
It's up for discussion.
Okay. Any discussion on Dennis McNichol? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. On to the next.
Okay. I would make a motion to offer Melissa Todd a contract, 1.0 full-time equivalency in, as a special educator, grades seven through 12 at Mill River, obviously.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I just want to say that I know Melissa for a long time. She was a parent educator, and I'm really excited that she went back and got her degree and is a special educator.
Okay. Any other? All in favor? All right, next.
Next, I make a motion for, to offer Cheyenne Bezakis a contract, 1.0 full-time equivalency as a student services coach, grades K through 12, special education.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right, good.
Next, I'll make a motion to offer a contract to Cassidy Colburn as a substitute custodian, 1.0 full-time equivalency from now until the end of the year.
I'll second. Any discussion?
I just have a question about the compensation, just so I understand it, the $16.46 per diem?
Mm-hmm.
So, that means they're paid 16 bucks a day?
Per hour, the per diem is really language we use when we have somebody do a timesheet.
Okay, so that's an hourly wage.
It's an hourly wage, and they're paid by the day.
Gotcha. Good question.
Because they're just a substitute for a long term.
Sure. So, they get paid for when they get called in?
Exactly.
Okay?
Any other discussion? All in favor? Good, next.
Next, I would make a motion to offer Sylvia Duak a contract, .5 full-time equivalency, social studies, grades seven through 12.
I'll second. I'll second it. Pat, any discussion?
Just so folks know, that's the other half of the driver ed program.
Her resume, like, did she just move back from Austria?
Does she want to take driver's ed?
No. All in favor?
She doesn't take the driver's ed, maybe a language program.
Yeah. Her kids will be driving in the other side?
Or personal finance.
Yeah, there you go. Okay, all in favor? You are good. On to the next.
On to the next. I'll make a motion to offer Ryan Harvey a contract, 1.0 full-time equivalency in technology innovations, as a technology innovation and support specialist.
Discussion?
And this is, yeah, this is a position, filling a position of a person who has retired.
What does a technology and innovation support specialist do?
Or to BJ.
Two things. One, if you think about just regular help desk kind of things, my computer's not working, help me out. But then also, hey, I want to do something with my students using my new interactive TV in my room. Can you help me figure out some things I could do? So, the really technical piece, but also the, how do we integrate into the classroom piece?
Fair enough. That answers my question.
All in favor? Okay, you're good.
Okay, next. We receive a resignation from Lisa Friendson, resigning her position as office nurse, nurse and health office assistant at Clarendon and Shrewsbury, and I make a motion that we accept that resignation.
I'll second it.
We will miss Lisa. Lisa's fantastic, and has done a phenomenal job the year she's been with us.
All in favor? Finally, she was done on the 19th, so...
So, it's sort of done.
Yeah, we're just doing the after effect. All right, next.
One more. One more. I would like to offer, make a motion to offer Jennifer Golution a two-year contract as teaching principal, 1.0 full-time equivalency at Tinmouth Elementary School.
I'll second it.
And just so folks know, I'd ask Josh to speak a little bit on this, but he's not here. Josh was our board member that participated on that hiring committee. That was two parents, two teachers, one staff member, one board member. So, those wonderful folks who we know work really hard and care about our schools, and we trust them to make the best decision for Tinmouth, were the ones that brought us Jen. So, I think worth noting that that's been our process in hiring principals for the last several years, and I think it's been a good process. It's gotten us some really good folks.
Did there end up being, like, more input from parents after that?
Yeah, we sent a survey out to caregivers, asking, I think, three questions, you know, what qualities would you look for in a candidate? What do you value? And I forget maybe what the third one was, but they were all open-ended questions, which I think, whenever you can do open-ended, great, instead of a 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, I think open-ended often gives us a lot more to think about. We got about maybe 18 or so responses, maybe or so. Don't quote me on that. Tabitha, Tabitha's there. Tabitha could tell me how off I am from 18. Maybe it was 10, maybe 10, somewhere between 10 and 18 responses. We sent that off to the committee. So, the committee had all of those responses. We didn't do anything with them except package them up and send them off to the committee, so they had that feedback. I do think the committee solicited some feedback some other ways. They had some conversations with folks, too. So, they, I think, did, made a good faith effort to get as much as they could to make their decision.
And just to piggyback on what Brian is saying, the process that we use now in terms of hiring principals, administrators, I think, and I've been involved in it since beforehand, it really isn't a good place now, and we've really put it back in the hands of the community to make the final decisions. I mean, we've got one coming up at Clarendon, one at Mill River, and so, I think, in both instances, we're trusting the community members and the staff to make the best decisions. And rather than just saying, bringing one person to the board and saying, here you go, that's changed, and I think that's very important.
And I actually even think more frequently than not, you know, Len and I are maybe identifying four candidates that are qualified from applications. We're going to interview those four candidates at central office. The committee's going to see those four candidates, so we're often not even narrowing down.
Right.
These days, having four solid candidates is, you know, great, you know, with hiring the way it is, so, you know, lots of times, there is not even a lot of narrowing down by the time it gets to committee. In the past, if we had 10 applicants and we interviewed eight or something, we wouldn't send eight to the committee, but it's been working out lately that we tend to send everybody to committee. And we feel good about that, because we feel that we really are giving the committee the choice. Like Len said, we're not sending one person to the committee or two people, you know? If you send two people to the committee, well, gosh, you can probably make that decision. You send them a good one and a bad one, you know? So, we try to really make a good faith effort of, we send all the good candidates, we do.
And I want to thank Brian for that. I mean, it's been a nice change, and I think it helps our community to understand that there is a process, and we follow that process, and it's a viable process.
But I can't, I will accept your thanks, Len, but I think it's worth noting that, you know, that's something that we've worked on as a board, and something that, Len, you and I spent a lot of time talking together. That wasn't just something I did. I think that's something you had a, you had a large hand in, and the board has been very supportive of.
Okay.
Real quick, any idea what the teaching role would be for this principal?
It will, it will likely be primary grades. Jen is licensed primary grades, so she's got some wonderful experiences there. It's, we haven't talked about this yet, but it's probably going to be something similar to what Maureen was doing, where there's some additional math or ELA support somewhere where needed in those areas, but that's a little bit to be determined still, Stephen.
Not driver's ed?
Not driver's ed. We are not calling Jen down to the high school to do driver's ed.
Come on, Jen. All right, so, all in favor?
Awesome.
All right, good.
Congratulations, Jen.
Congrats. Are you done yet, Len?
I've been done for quite some time, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Once you're, to be determined on next meeting?
Yeah, because Brian was talking about graduation.
Yeah, graduation is June 5th, which is normally when we would have.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So, we'll decide that when we decide that.
Okay. All right, so, on to policy. And unfortunately, I was not able to be present for the meeting, so I'm not sure who ran the last one. Can you take over? Because...
Nick did.
I did.
Yeah, Nick, okay. Can you?
So, policy, we met a couple of weeks ago. I'm going to lump a couple of these together. I would like to make a motion to adopt B-13 and B-14.
Because those are the ones that have already cleared second read.
Yep.
Those have been in the herald the appropriate amount of time.
I'll second that. Oh, I'm not on, oh, I don't have to be on policy.
Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor?
No, you can vote.
Yeah, no, because this is full.
It's not a committee.
Okay.
Look at that, the eyes have it.
Okay.
This next group, I'm going to split up again, so I will make a motion to adopt for a first read D-19... read, D-19 and F-32.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Did you, did, did you say D as in David?
Yep. And F-32.
Do we get a second for that?
I did.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have, I have a question about D-19. I thought that we decided to get rid of that.
There we think.
Because since it was no longer relevant.
Oh. Yes, that's in the wrong bucket.
We still have to send it out.
No, it has to be.
Were we, were we rescinding that?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, and, and, yeah, we can do that when we get it in the paper, did we ask Stan about that?
Oh, yeah, we did an update.
Because my only wonder would be, we had one other policy that our auditors, our auditors said, hold on, wait till things have cleared a little more before you get rid of it, but, so that's the only reason I ask on that one.
So we have to, you have to withdraw your motion.
I withdraw my motion.
And I'll, I'll withdraw my motion.
You just want to do F-32?
Yeah.
For now?
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion that we send F-32 for a first read.
Here he comes.
The D-19 is payroll during COVID.
Payroll during COVID closure, do we need that on the books still?
They said to keep it open until actually, because at some point, I would think the AOE would be sending out their request for audits and stuff, and then had all your policies in place.
And there's nothing there that hurts us about it.
No.
Okay.
So their recommendation was to keep it open.
Okay.
Thank you.
You can go back to your cave.
Thank you, Stan.
I took mine back.
I took mine back, and I made a motion to send F-32 for a first read.
Second.
Second. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
You're good.
So before we get too far, B-10 as a notable is also not how policy wanted it sent to the board, so.
So it's not ready yet still?
So it's not ready yet.
Okay, right on.
That's the.
So, next meeting, you're good, right?
I'm good.
Next meeting would be scheduled for, oops, wrong month. Oh, right month, yeah. May 14th. Unfortunately, I will be out of town for work. If you.
I mean, it sounds like Nick did a great job.
I was going to say, if Nick's fine with doing it again, then I'm fine with it.
We're on.
You're good? Okay.
As long as we have a forum.
And I'll, and I'll be there to help.
Okay. Okay, so next meeting for policy is on the 14th at 5:30. And if I can get back in time, I will try to be back in time.
You were so close last time.
Yeah, it was only, you know, New Hampshire.
Do you think, do you think you could tackle B-10, B-10, D-19, and that F-28 wellness?
We'll see what we can do.
Wellness can wait.
We'll, we'll see what we can do.
Okay, fair enough.
We usually look pretty good about plugging through, about.
Well, BNG, that's me again.
Yep.
So we met on the 22nd of April, we had good conversations with Tim, we also finished our, what's the word I'm looking for? Our reorg checklist, we went through all the little action items, we talked about the bus radios, and Tim walked us through the need for updated middle school basketball hoops, which will be coming to the board next meeting, a proposal for getting those approved. Our next meeting is the 27th of May.
At what time?
Five.
Okay.
That's Memorial Day.
Huh, how about that? They're all just days on a calendar to me. I guess I'll reach out to Tim.
And find out.
To be determined, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, it's supposed to be the fourth Monday, which I guess doesn't work.
Well, you can go, but I'm not sure everybody else will. Okay, community engagement.
We will have our meeting on May 15th at 6:00, prior to the regular board meeting, but we haven't met, so there's no report.
Okay, thank you. Negotiations.
Josh is not here, but we have not had another meeting, so nothing new.
Okay.
Right now, arbitration? Yeah, waiting.
We have not had another meeting.
Perfect.
Okay. Why am I putting that on there? Now, on to finance. I don't know who's chair of finance.
Uh, still to be determined.
We don't have a chair yet.
We don't have an official meeting.
Okay, so Brian.
Do we, do we want to set? I can repay orders.
Do we want to set an official meeting?
Yeah, I, I think it wouldn't hurt.
Let's do pay orders first, then we'll set a meeting.
So I have payroll warrants for FY '24, I've got a regular one, the amount of $624,690.49, another regular one in the amount of $7,329.17, a third regular one in the amount of $594,647.38, totaling $1,226,667.4. I would ask for approval as.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Oh, sorry, discussion? All right, all in favor? I forgot what we were doing for a second, sorry.
No, all good.
Okay.
So now I have some pay orders, general fund FY '24, the amount of $166,083.71, another general fund in the amount of $30,437, after-school program in the amount of $4,238.05, lunch program in the amount of $48,344.20, Shrewsbury lunch program in the amount of $4,504.1, those all total up to $253,606.97. Student activities for Mill River in the amount of $4,102.10, student activities for Shrewsbury in the amount of $437.92, student activities Tinmouth in the amount of $500, student activities Wallingford, the amount of $1,272.14, totaling up to $6,312.16 for student activities. I would ask that someone make a motion to approve as read.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion on it? Questions? All in favor? All right, we're good, okay. So scheduling a finance meeting, who is on finance?
And Josh.
And Josh? Okay. Finance has been like sporadic, when they usually meet, so pick a day, any day. What would you guys like to do? It was usually on a Thursday, right?
We had been doing Thursdays for a while lately, yep.
I want time.
Well, that always fluctuated because Liz was chair, and she had to do later, like, I think it was like 5:00 or 5:30 or something like that, she was trying to do. So, you guys can.
And likely just a short meeting for the purposes of a chair in reorg, we really don't have a lot to report. End of year, it wouldn't hurt to have a meeting.
So what about?
Stephen, what days are good for you?
Yeah, I'm open, that's fine.
You want to keep on a Thursday?
Yeah, Thursdays, I mean, as long as I can join hybrid, Thursdays and Wednesdays are usually tough for me to join in person, Mondays are better.
Yep, we can, we can set up a hybrid meeting, no problem.
Um, Nick, what time do you?
I like late.
Okay. How about Thursday, the 23rd, at like 5?
May 23rd?
Yeah. Or you can, I mean, if you want the 9th or the 16th, or, I mean, pick a day, any day, I'm just trying to help navigate.
That works for me, May 23rd at 5.
You good, Nick?
Yeah, it works for me.
You good, Stephen?
Hybrid.
You can do hybrid?
Yep.
All right, perfect. Okay, so finance, first meeting for reorg will be on the 23rd at 5. I think that's it. Look at that. Any other legal business we?
I'll, I'll share one, and I shared this with some folks, oh, go, you go first, Len.
Um, at what committee?
For.
Josh. Josh, Josh isn't here.
Yeah, Josh isn't here.
Okay, I was just wondering.
We'll have to wait. Yeah, we'll have to wait till next time, when he's here.
You know, I shared something with board members today, and I know some of you probably haven't had time to look at it, but I think it's worth noting that US News, who, you know, is fairly big in the world of school rankings, you know, people talk about them a lot, you hear about them a lot, US News has ranked Mill River number two among high schools in Rutland County, which I think is, is good news because we have a lot of high schools in Rutland County.
Just to clarify, US News and World Reports.
Yep.
So that's the full name of it, you might recognize. So we are very honored to be celebrated in that way, not that that big data is really what we want to focus on, we really focus on the little data, that each kid's growth and each classroom's growth, that is the stuff we care about most, but we are really excited about that.
And I think, while this is not something that we hang our hat on, that, wow, we've done everything we need to do, and it's not something that we're actually trying to do, you know, the things that we do every day and the results that we try and bring every day, the small things, the things that we see teachers doing in their classrooms that are making a very meaningful difference, it's nice to see that sometimes those things do all add up to these big, bigger lagging indicators. The lagging indicators are the ones that take years to get to, the leading indicators are the ones that our teachers are bringing us every day. So we talk about like literacy scores on a state level assessment, we can't flip our literacy scores on a state level assessment in a year or two or three, that's a lagging indicator. But all the work that you've seen our educators doing in the lower grades with literacy, if we sustain that work 10 years from now, gosh, we'll, we'll see that play out in some of these higher level indicators. But it is, is nice to be looking at some of these things and bring them to folks' attention. Again, not the biggest deal in the world for us because we're a little more focused on the day-to-day and the, and the victories that we're seeing in our classrooms, but I think worth sharing that other things are coming along too. We've had a lot of folks doing a lot of hard work. We don't have everything right, we don't get everything right, we still have a lot to do, but we want to be proud of the work that we actually have done. So, thought that was worth sharing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Bob.
All right.
A lot of, a lot of teamwork for that. Agenda building.
Are we putting pre-K?
Pre-K, yep, Sarah sends her regards and says sorry, she can absolutely follow back up with pre-K.
What do we have on the agenda already?
We may have a department hearing from a department from the high school, seeing who might be available for that and interested in doing that. Those are the two presentations we, we have. We are entering into, let me put my list up, we're entering into a little bit of a quiet part of the year. We won't have sports update again until spring season is over, so sometime in June we'll have our sports update. We're going to hit our summer pattern of dig in very deep on goals and planning and assessing where we are and how we've done. So we actually do hit a little bit of a lull here, so next meeting, pre-K and potentially a department. There are likely to be some end-of-year pieces that we bring you, like maybe some bids, but that might be a, a kind of light meeting. We need to think about, do we need an early June meeting? There, there's likely to be some personnel pieces that I do think as we're, as we're getting through hiring season, you know, you saw a lot of hires tonight, you're going to see some more hires in June, so I think sometimes it's, it's better to get those taken care of than to have people hanging out and waiting. So I, I would recommend that we do have an early June meeting. Len, do you want to chime in there?
Yeah, I was, I was just going to say the same thing, I think, you know, we have the Claritin principalship.
Yep.
And Mill River, both, that we'd probably like to button up sooner rather than later, and we also talked tonight about the superintendent evaluation and the.
Yep.
Superintendent's contract, so I, I, I think, you know, my plan is to get the evaluation out in mid-May, that's my goal.
Len, how would you, how would you feel about May 29, because I, I think that might be better than June 12, if we had to pick a different week from the 5th, 5th being graduation, would May 29 be too early?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Because my hope is to have the superintendent evaluation back by, like, the, I forget what I said.
And I see folks checking calendars, thank you, because that's not a typical week for us, May 29.
And I've asked them to send them back by 31st, I, I'm fine with the 29. I, I just think in terms of trying to button up personnel stuff, I think that's kind of a.
Yeah, and I'd rather get, I'd rather get our, our next new hires in sooner rather than later, so. Would that be a 6 o'clock or a 6:30 personnel, maybe a 6 o'clock?
Yeah, I would suggest that.
Okay.
So, on that track of personnel being, oh wait, maybe I don't want to say this.
Okay, I don't know what you're going to say, so.
I have a.
Okay, hold on, sorry. So on that track of personnel being moved to the 29th, with graduation being June 5th, it will also be, would have normally been our normally scheduled board meeting for June?
Yep.
Are we okay with bumping that meeting to match on the 29th?
What do you mean? Oh, the board meeting, yes.
The board meeting.
That's what I was kind of hoping we would do.
And bump it, and then we're actually just gonna, to not offset us, like, two weeks, just keep the regular one in June?
Get, get back to June 19.
Yes.
And back on schedule, yeah. I, I agree with that recommendation, if folks are comfortable with that.
All right, how does everybody feel about that one?
Okay, and then we do have a chunk of new folks, so just for the new folks, so that you know, we'd have that June 19 meeting, and then we would likely not have a July 3rd meeting, because we typically don't do a meeting the, the July 4th week, we only do one July meeting typically. So we would do the late June, we'd do a late July, we would try to plan maybe a Saturday retreat day in somewhere.
That's what I was just going to say, if our agenda for the 29th is still light, can we add that as a topic?
To find a date for retreat, I think that's a great idea.
To go over our goals.
For board members, yeah.
Yeah, so we, our, our, our board meetings get a tiny bit light, but then we dive into the retreat to have a little more time to do some sustained work.
Right.
So that's kind of the trade-off of that balance when we hit this time of year. No, that's a great idea.
So just to think ahead for July, because we're kind of messing with. So just to think ahead for July, because we're kind of messing with things a little bit. So we wouldn't have on the 3rd, it would be on the 17th of July? Right? Yeah.
Yes.
Nothing on July 3rd. It will be on the 17th.
17th.
Okay, just so you guys all, and then we'll get back on track in August. That's just the summer. And I will actually not be in the state on the 17th, so.
Okay.
Hopefully Josh is here.
You're doing very well, setting up schedules that you're not going to be here for.
I know, well, I mean, I can call you from the beach, but I'm not going to do like Len does.
Says Len from South Carolina.
Exactly. I'm not like Len.
Who's coming back next week, right?
Yes.
I will be back.
Monday.
Monday.
And I will be sitting at his doorstep waiting.
Behind me on that bed, you will see.
Your suitcase?
Okay, there you go.
Okay, so just so everybody kind of got the plan a little bit of how the summer goes.
So we got an agenda, we're good?
Do we need executive session?
None that I'm aware of.
All right, I'm adjourning at 8:51.
By consensus.
Have a good night.
Thank you, everybody.